The State of the Senate will be ready to meet for Monday, February 9th, 2026. Please join us in a moment of silence while I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular session of January 12th, 2026.
Oh, can everybody hear me? I don't really have an adjustment to the minutes, but I did want to point out something that's minute adjacent. If you go to page four of the packet, the meeting packet, where the minutes are, and you see the third paragraph down, I just wanted to call attention to that paragraph. And first, I want to thank Natalie and the finance group for verifying something I caught and brought to their attention. So after this meeting, these minutes were approved, and I dug a little deeper into those pages 38 and 39 of our audit, and I noticed a $2.1 million calculation error on behalf of PKS, who does our audits. I just sat down, sorry. They listed our long-term debt ending balance for fiscal year '25 among governmental and business-type activities as $10 million and some other digits there, but my recalculating, and Natalie confirming, that number should have been 8.2 million. So that's a $2 million difference. So looking back at the audits for those three fiscal years prior to this, there wasn't an issue in that same heading, so this is probably a one-off, but I thought it should be noted. It's already been corrected online, and to blame is huge, and I would just encourage our partners to do our audit to just be a bit more focused on that section. So that's all. And with that, if there's no other corrections, I will motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Thanks for addressing that. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Wors. Can everybody hear me? I feel like I'm forgetting. All right. Yes, second by Councilmember Nurr. All in favor say aye. All votes, let the record reflect the votes unanimous with Vice President Burrow action.
May I just add clarification? They carried the previous line and added twice as Excel formula addition, so one line and the line above. It is not an error in statement, it was just an error in addition of the code.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right, up next, Agenda Item 2. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one's Proclamation 2026-01, and it's Black History Month. We'll begin. "Whereas National Black History Month is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements of Black Americans throughout the United States. Whereas the town of Berlin celebrates the rich history, culture, and contributions of Black Americans who have shaped our community. Whereas the National 2026 Black History Month theme is a century of Black history commemorations. Whereas the founders of Black History Month urge us to explore the impact and meaning of Black history and life commemorations," wow, "in transforming the status of Black people in modern world. Whereas the town of Berlin has been indelibly shaped," Miss Sarah, she really wanted to get some tongue tied today, "and influenced by its own Black American community. Whereas we can all celebrate the measurable contribution of Black Americans and honor their national, state, and local legacies and achievements. Whereas we must also recognize centuries of injustice and confront those injustices that still fester today. Whereas we live in a country that was founded on the idea that all are created equally, let the town of Berlin continue to come together this Black History Month to preserve our understanding and history and embody the idea of freedom, equal treatment, and equal opportunity for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the town of Berlin do hereby proclaim the month of February 2026 as our municipality's observance of Black History Month." Thank you. All right, up next is Proclamation 2026-02, and that's for Women's History Month. "Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have historically sacrificed to make significant contributions to their families, workplaces, and neighborhoods as leaders and colleagues, counselors, and clerics, artists, and teachers, doctors, and nurses, mothers, and grandmothers. And whereas despite the innumerable contributions women have made and continue to make, too little is taught or even known about the enormous impact women have on our collective national history. And whereas the National Women's History Alliance chose the 2026 theme that celebrates leading the change, women shaping a sustainable future. This theme recognizes that in the face of interconnected global challenges, women are driving sustainable solutions that strengthen people, communities, and the planet for generations to come. Whereas this Women's History Month we made, may we recognize the long-storied history of great women helping to realize our nation's founding promise and highest aspirations. May we continue working to build a world worthy of the dreams and goals of all women and girls. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the town of Berlin do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month. We call upon all citizens of the town of Berlin to observe this month and witness this hand and seal that's effective in the 9th day of February." I'm going to have a shot of stress over everybody. All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Sarah. Up next is Agenda Item 3, and before each one of these are actioned, there will be the opportunity for public comment. Just for, let's see, hold on one second. So the first group of motions, we're going to take kind of together because we have Motion 2026-04, 2026-05, and 2026-06. They're all kind of going to go together. So Danielle, if you don't mind coming up with us, we're going to review this together. It does have myself running point with Natalie and then Danielle, but we're going to take a team approach to this. So, Motion 2026-04 is a motion of the mayor and council to transfer an unassigned fund balance to cover the need for the town hall renovation. 2026-05 includes the bid award, and then 2026-06 is kind of the alternates that would be needed to make all of this happen. So why don't we take them all together? So we need, I'd rather go over to 2026-05 first and discuss the base bid that we received, which is the $2,391,000 for the construction. It includes a contingency of $312,019 and furniture costs of about $300,000, and then the add-alternate for the elevator, which is about $205,000. So Danielle, anything you want to add to that? If not, I want to kind of talk a little bit about what we discussed that kind of caused the bid to go a little higher than we expected.
Yeah, I mean, just kind of for everyone's refresher, we bid the project at a base bid amount for the renovations to town hall, and then we pulled out five, identified five alternates. So those are, the mayor has kind of alluded to them already, but those are, the annex building was an alternate, the upgrade AV system in this room was alternate two, alternate three was the elevator, alternate four was the facade improvements, and then the fifth was the generator. So we just did those to sort of identify some of those items that, you know, we knew would be a separate, easy thing to identify the cost in case we needed to cut costs somewhere. So I think the base bid, you have the bid tally, we have really good participation. You can see that, you know, of the seven bids we received, they were all sort of in line with each other. And so I'll let the mayor take back over, but basically what we're recommending today is to award the contract to Keller Brothers as the parent of the bidder with the addition of alternate three.
Very nice. Thank you. Now, when we originally came up with the amount that we thought we would need for town hall renovations, that was us throwing something against the board, right? And along the way, some people feel like, man, this project is higher than we expected. Well, we didn't anticipate a full HVAC redo. We didn't expect the well failures that we've had downstairs with the geothermal unit. And then we also were unsure about whether or not we were going to embark on the sprinklering of the building. There were a few things that were up in the air. So with that, this bid does include making sure that we replace those things. It does not include a new generator, correct?
That's one of the alternates.
That is one of the alternates. So it does not include the generator to generate in the event of a power failure for town hall, which is needed, but maybe something that we can phase if the group decides to go that route. And then sprinklering the building, which is necessary. I don't want to call our out, but I'm just teasing.
What was the original budget?
We originally had planned on, what, $2.5 million, I think?
Yeah, allocated. So, I'm glad you, Mayor, I'm glad that you decided to kind of group these together because I do have some things to say about it, and if you will allow me a point of personal privilege and indulge me here for a few minutes. So with the transfer that is requested in this motion, the total of this project turns into $4,120,000. Total all-in with all these motions together and all the alternates is $3,732,907. I'm a little unclear on where the contingency of 10% at $312,000 comes from, because 10% of either of those is not, the math isn't mapping there. But...
I can answer that one real quick. It was, if you took the base bid and all of the alternates and added those together, that was the 10% of the whole construction project.
But isn't that $373,000? And this says $312,000.
The generator was not part of it originally. Generator was an add-on later.
No, I, well, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, Natalie, but I think you're adding the furniture in, and that's not part of it.
But it's in the motion.
Yeah, it's in the motion, but it's not part of the construction.
It's not part of the construction contract. So this would be, if we had all the money in the world and we gave Keller the base bid and all the alternates, you know, day one, that total, 10% of that was the contingency. That was my thought, is down the road, if we do accept these other alternates, even at a later date, just protecting, you know, protecting the project.
Fair, fair.
And that's a hefty contingency, too. I recognize that. Hopefully, we don't need to...
I mean, but it is an old building, so I think we need to go into it with that understanding that it is an old building, you're looking at lab and classroom, you're looking at areas that have multiple ceilings, probably multiple...
Well, but I think it's worth noting that $312 is just money that the town retains as a, if they need it. No, I'm saying it's not part of the construction contract.
Isn't 10% fairly typical?
Yeah, I think it's a good conservative estimate, so.
Okay, well, thank you for clearing that up, you know, but, you know, I'm not going to approach. So I just want to, this is one of those things here that I'm a little frustrated, so I'm explaining, and then I'm going to go in and type and group on this. So up here, you know, we've been told for months that things we've asked for will have to wait until FY '27, stormwater, parking, streets, sidewalks. Yet we're now able to move $1.6 million over for this town hall renovation. This option, or at least the appetite to move money from unassigned, wasn't there when both Vice President Burrow, and I realize he's not here, and I specifically asked, and administration agreed, calling it a needed first step, that stormwater be funded for the ditch ownership RFP...
That's a, that's a...
Mayor, please, respectfully, please wait till I'm finished. And preventative maintenance initiatives. I haven't been to all the parking merchant meetings, but I'm going to guess that that moving money option hasn't been presented there, is that it's here. The audit that I mentioned earlier says the unassigned fund balance of $3 million is the amount set aside for future purposes and is available for emergencies, and goes on to say the balance represents 4.6 months of operating expenses. FY '24 audit was 4.8 million or 7.8 months, FY '23 was six months. I can't remember what the GFO recommended amount is to have an unassigned for emergencies, but I believe that we are past that in terms of months. But my broader question at the end, please, you actually don't need to answer, these are just, if needed, what's the plan to replenish this amount? Infrastructure, urgent. Stormwater, in my opinion, urgent. Parking lot repair, urgent. These are some things that we talk about up here. But what our community is talking about, their kitchen tables, are things like grocery utility prices and taxes. We saved over three or four fiscal years out of the general fund, $2.5 million for this renovation project, which, just so, by the way, I believe we do, we do need, I mean, we need renovations. Some of these things seem to be wants. So we've been presented with over, actually, a $4 million possibility for renovation. State budget concerns, grant funding shaky at best, both from state and federal governments. We're chicanery preparing to do what they need to do on their budget, and moving this unassigned amount as cavalierly as this to cover an over budget, in my opinion, is a bit of a slap to us up here and to our taxpayers. It gives me pause, that's all I'm saying, it really does. So like I said, I'm glad that you grouped these together, and I'm hoping for a solid discussion on these motions because I think it really needs to be done, and I would urge my colleagues not to consider even the first motion of A until we've talked through B and C.
Can I, I'm going to ask you a question. Where do you rank this project? You talk about urgent projects. How do you categorize this one?
I believe that there is a definite need for renovations here for town hall. But what the point I was trying to get across was...
I'm just asking because...
That's fine.
You're ranking projects, but you haven't allocated a ranking to this one.
We have already agreed to save money up for this project. I mentioned that in the past fiscal years. But when we sat up here and asked for individual things, I can't speak for anyone else, but we, I believe, all have at some point, it was always, we have to wait. We have to wait, we can't do it.
Zach, what you're talking about, you group an enterprise fund project in justification for a general fund assignment, and then also, hold on, and then also in the audit, you talk about due to's and due from's, where the stormwater fund already owes the general fund. So you're talking both ways. It doesn't make sense.
Who is going to pay for the stormwater RFP study? The stormwater?
I know, I've said multiple times, it has to be the stormwater fund. You're not going to be able to bring that over to the general fund without adding to the due to's or due from's of the stormwater fund itself. Am I correct?
I don't want to spend this whole time talking about stormwater. It was an example that I had meant that it seems that we just now suddenly have this additional option that was not available on anything that we've asked for before.
You have to give an example.
I've given you examples.
You use stormwater, it doesn't make any sense.
I use stormwater, infrastructure.
What? What do you want to...
Pardon, we got an email today about sidewalks.
Okay.
That was asked earlier. Now, I understand that's a state rule. My point, Zach, I'm not going down this rule.
I'm trying to understand.
I think it was fairly clear.
It wasn't, that's why I'm asking for...
Then I'm going to sum it up. Yes, the town hall renovation is urgent, we had a budget of 2.5, you have come with us, come back at us with a budget of 4.1 with a request of transferring $1.6 million from reserves.
Those are all valid questions, right?
That's all, then that's...
That's all valid.
Then I'd like to have a discussion with the group. I said what I thought.
Okay, so now, also what I think is important to note is that the amount that we have requested in grant funds, it's undetermined whether we'll get that or not, but there is a basket of money that could potentially reimburse the town for some of these costs that are grant fund, but we won't know about that until the spring. So, and I think you had asked something about the fund balance and the GFOA recommendation.
How many months is recommended?
Right, so just for clarity, the stabilization fund reserve is a fund that we created, and it houses that amount of money, and it's geared toward the exact, well, there's a funding formula that derives the balance of that fund based off of our expenditures, and that is a healthy reserve that meets the GFOA's recommendation.
What is the other side fund balance, GFO, GFOA recommendation for operating expenses?
Two months, six to eight.
And if you look at stabilization, we have it. None of this puts the town in an uncomfortable fiscal position, does it, Natalie?
With all my calculations, even if we are transferring the full $1.6 million as motion states, it will leave us with three months of unassigned balance of operating costs for the general fund.
And this does phase the project.
Fiscal '26 budgeted, not an actuary.
And this phases the project, it doesn't take it all in one fell swoop to make the management.
I would not put the numbers in a motion if I would put any jeopardy or even slight shadow of a jeopardy on an unassigned balance of general fund.
Natalie, can I discuss that?
I mean, I asked her the same question, said, does any of this sound alarm bells for you? The answer was no. I mean, we would not be doing that administratively if we were putting the town in a negative financial position.
Now, the plan is to replenish back with any grant funding that come in the future. And I'm saying in, even if it's any thousand dollars, it would go back to the balance of general fund. That's the plan.
And the question came to me about, all right, what do we do with the annex building, planning building? And you talk about the things that we've discussed at night, we discussed that at night. So that is an alternate that I felt we could prolong a little bit. Does it meet all the objectives that we set out for? No, but it's something that we can prolong and push off to another year. The council AV systems, you talk about emails that we get, that is consistently in the emails we receive from the public, the ability to watch, the ability to listen and understand. It's there as an alternate. I did not put it in because I didn't know how strongly the group felt. I know that we need these things, but it's something that I felt we might be able to wire in, and then wait.
So what is facade improvements exactly?
That is the cornice work and stuff out front. That is something that can wait to a later date. There's no structural need to get that done.
Does this, is it, does this facade improvement of $80,000 include moving the door and all that stuff that the historic district approved?
It is all related to the historic district's approval, but it does encompass, the door moving is part of the overall renovation, but it does include new signage, the cornice work, and the new canopy.
The front being...
Yes. The front being...
Correct.
William Street versus...
And then the new generator, your emergency operations, and you know, continuity of government-wise, we need those things. However, it's something that we're going to need to prolong, I think, because you're looking at another, what, $500,000 in alternates there?
Can you talk about the annex building? What does this amount mean?
So that's the planning department building's renovation. We would prolong that, they would say as is for right now.
Like this money would be to that building, bring it up to a workable space.
Mayor, may I just jump in? Maybe just to explain a little bit better, so the three motions in place right now, I know it's a lot of information. The first motion that you see is assigning unassigned balance or transferring, whichever you want to call it, is contingent on items in the third motion. So that could potentially change, this is all for discussion.
Which is why I suggested...
The second motion is the award of a contract to the contractor, that's pretty much it. We will need to do that. And then the decision, if you decide to go with all the alternates, the amount of a first motion will remain unchanged. If any of the items from the third motion, I'm calling it sort of a third in order, will be decreased, then the amount to assign will decrease as well.
But that discussion has to occur before the motions start being enacted because you can't award a contract if you haven't allocated the funds.
That's why we're taking them all together.
It's a, it's technically the proper way to address it.
So, could I? RJAC's numbers correct. $4.1 million is what we're looking to spend on the renovation now.
The entirety of the construction plus all the alternates come too.
That includes the design and architecture allocation, or rather, contract that was previously...
Right, that includes all of items.
But that's why that doesn't appear here.
Yeah, that includes all of items.
Well, and soft costs of the AMVs, and furniture, and contingency, so plus all the alternatives, yes. So it is the all-in, I call it the all-in.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm not going to vote for spending $4 million on the town hall. So if we can unpack it and try to, you know, the alternates...
That's what we're suggesting, by the way. We're not suggesting the $4 million.
Okay, so I guess that's where it is confusing. That's where, like, when you open your packet and you read it, okay, so it's a motion to approve, and there's the alternates.
So the alternates are there because the recommendation I gave the staff was to pull them out.
Yeah, okay.
Because, but I didn't know where to go because it takes a group decision.
Sure.
So option, or item 3C is what I think we should wait on.
Okay, that's fair. That's great, and that's...
We had to have numbers to put in the motions, we couldn't put blanks.
So I think you do that in subsequent fiscal years. So we'll figure that part out. Right now, let's get the core part of the building done, and we'll manage the rest as it goes.
So I think that that's, the lack of clarity is what led to some of the concerns that, you know, the public will be hurt. So that's, that helps, helps right there, you know.
Which ones did you send there?
My recommendations, that we wait on 3C, which is page 13. That's why they're broken out.
Right. It's a motion.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were talking about. So you're saying the only, so I hear you when you say this, but you guys say this, and people out there can understand. The one, you're talking to only include the elevator alternate.
Correct.
And the others, meaning the annex building, the AV system, the facade, and the generator.
Prolong into the phase two.
Prolong into another portion.
Correct.
Okay, so you're saying the only addition that we're talking about keeping is the elevator at $204,990.
And the reason for that is because it makes more sense to do it when you're doing the whole project rather than phasing that. You agree, Danielle?
Absolutely. All of the others are very easy to do at a later date. I mean, the AV system is probably the only one that's a little bit more tied to, you know, ceilings and things like that.
Well, we can rough in some of those.
The rest of it is very easy to do later.
So my question, Danielle, here, and where leave this completely 1, 2, 4, and 5?
Right.
Not awarded, any of those will be performed by the contractor that we award in, and will the amounts be locked in?
The amounts are only locked in for 60 days from receipt of bids. Yeah, we're going to have to.
I mean, I think we're not doing things...
We've got a little side talk.
Yeah, I'll listen to you.
Go ahead.
So the alternate pricing is held for 60 days from receipt of bids, so that was January 12th. So we have until March 12th, which we were actually thinking is one more council, you know, a couple more council meetings potentially, at which time, you know, these numbers may are subject to change. They're not guaranteed to change, but, you know, market fluctuations. So the contractor on board, hopefully they will have started by then, if we decide six months from now to do the AV upgrades, they're going to reprice it. It may not be that exact amount, probably not going to double, but it's guaranteed.
Well, we could have them rough in the cabling that we would need, right?
Yeah.
And then ultimately do whatever installs we need at a later date.
So I'm looking at, if we're just doing 3B, it's a total of $3.2 million all-in.
$3,207,120.
So it's still $700,000 over the initial budget.
But realize the initial budget was like putting our finger up into the air and testing it. We also didn't bank on fire suppression, we didn't bank on a full replacement of all the HVAC or the well work that needs to be done. Remember when it was running down the street, creating that big puddle right down Bay Street with all the ice? That was because we had a well failure, and what we did was, knowing that we were getting ready to embark on this project, we band-aided it. It's not going to last long.
Why wouldn't you anticipate fire suppression?
I mean, how am I going to do that, Zach? We didn't have her at that time.
But that's for order.
It's not, it's not because of the store. Well, it's not because it's, no, it's really based on the square footage of the building and the use of the building, but we met with fire marshal, and we had an appetite to do it because it makes sense, you know, when you are renovating the entire building to sprinkler it, and they supported that. And it is, you know, it is subject to our, our, our...
Fire, fire.
But it is still not for renovation, correct?
Well, we think it's probably the best practice to do so. So when you look at the numbers, and by the way, too, like, I looked at some surrounding areas, like Cambridge, right? They did their town hall recently, a restoration project, and I think it was $10.5 million. So it's a historic preservation of their town hall as well. We're coming in much less, but it houses, what, six departments here? And a lot of different services for the town?
The other thing we're doing that wasn't part of the original plan was all-new sanitary piping, so all-new domestic water, all-new piping throughout the building.
We're...
Yes, yeah.
You're going to have to.
Yeah, that was, that was part of it anyways, yeah.
Mayor, I'm going to jump in again. So I hear the discussion and I hear the confusion again. The transfer for the full amount to cover all in, it's going to go to capital reserve. The motion needs, we are assigning funds unassigned available from fiscal '25 and transferring them to capital reserve. Approving all alternates, approving the project and everything that listed on the second and the third motion, second, third, allows to have the assigned funds in capital. If we are proceeded to phase two, locking those phrases right now, as of today, assigning the contract to our project, and down the road decided that we are not purchasing a generator or AV system, six months, at least we have insurance... generator or AV system, six months, at least we have insurance for what we have locked in today. The funds will remain in the capital just like we have, we have over two point five in the capital reserve. They will remain there available and at any point you can reassign them to Public Works or to Community Center or to another project under general fund. It is not that we are transferring and cashing the check. We're just assigning a balance to be available for this particular project with all the alternates that listed up here.
Okay, I definitely understand that. Thank you. So if one were to not agree with the alternates, that's gonna affect my, you know, I don't think.
I think we peel them out. We have to peel them out.
Right, I agree, right. So that's like the AV.
There's no way I'm gonna get three S's without peeling it out.
No, and there's the point that I think Jack was making earlier, he goes.
What?
Cause.
You said there's no way.
No way, I'm never.
That's right.
Yeah, so I think the point that Jack was trying to make earlier, I do agree with it, that there are so many capital projects that need working. We sat through six, seven, oh no, six, eight parking needs and about, without coming to a solution.
But we do have a solution.
We do? I would love to hear that.
Yeah. I guess that's agenda five.
We've got.
We gotta keep going.
How do I see that?
The point is, you didn't get that.
Yeah?
I'm joking.
Okay, cool, alright.
He made it sweat.
So.
It's kind of funny.
One of the issues I hear a lot about is sidewalks on Lawrence Street Boulevard, the parking lots, the liability lots that we have, the commerce. I guess, so that's why I can't feel supportive of any of these alternates at this time when those needs are pressing. Those are the needs I hear about. So if we have the funding in the capital reserve, I'd like to put it to use to today to immediately impact the town of Pearl and where issues that we are having and we're hearing. You know, I know we're gonna hear from the sidewalk those students because they're impatient. Not, they're not impatient, excuse me, but I don't feel like they're having got the answers that they.
Yeah, but we also, we reported out with the timing for State Highway and they're still on the same timetable. Nothing's changed there.
I understand.
But I mean, we also have channeled that hopefully by sharing that with planning and stuff to make sure that everybody has the same information. We haven't lost sight of it, but it's still on the same timetable from the state. Nothing's changed there.
So, yeah, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that motion that has those four, that I'm not really for putting that money aside for future years. Council AV system, I mean, my goodness gracious, I mean, what does that kill us? A hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars here. I mean, I, I don't personally think we need that. I think we need something better for sure, but I just don't think that is, I can't comfortably do that knowing that we could do the Memorial parking lot, the post office parking lot for that cost. When we have those costs that are there and ready and we did bang our head against the wall throughout a lot of parties, subcommittee meetings and we, we came back to where we started. We don't have an option unless there's, I can't wait for the surprise.
No, it's not a surprise, it's the monopoly.
Gotcha. Okay, so, oh, gotcha, okay. So, yeah, we're back to square zero and so that's where I am with it, I guess. You know, I'm not, I can't support transferring that money into a bucket without any plan, any, any of those I would support at this time.
Jack, you asked the question, go ahead and ask it for everybody to hear about the generator.
Well, I, I do, I, I am just, I would like to know if everybody is comfortable if we don't do the generator right now. Is that okay?
No, it's not great, but I think this will be.
Tim could actually speak to that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That generator is about, I guess around twenty-six years old and it's had multiple issues. In fact, we, a while back, we just spent, I want to probably about four thousand dollars just for radiator for it. The generator definitely needs to be replaced, but I mean, I'm looking at the price that was quoted for that. I can get it done for a lot less than that.
But I mean, to speak to that for a moment, like the recommend, the recommendation would be to rough in the wiring that's needed so we can move forward with a new generator. But to answer your question about a generator, you can't really run a municipal government from town hall without backup power, right? So it doesn't put us in the best spot, no. The reason that you have these four locks out is because I do think that they can wait for a future date.
And possibly cheaper.
Well, and for what, that includes generator, generator pad, vents around it, so there's more than just.
Inmentation, the whole.
Yeah, the generator itself. But I, I actually said this to Mary the other day, I would love for you to go find another price for something like the generator because that is very easy to carve out of a construction project. Is it easier to have a contractor that's doing it, you know, tie it all in? Yes, that's a lot simpler, but I, I said the same thing because I think if I recall when we started the project, you were already talking about replacing the generator as a separate, but we just decided to get the engineers to make sure everything was designed for this to happen, so I, I support that as well.
Can you do generator, generator pad fencing, remote control and all the parts for less than a hundred, a hundred thousand?
I don't know about that. I just know the generator portion itself, I can.
I think it's something that we need to evaluate in the future.
But that's just the generator.
Just, I think we're spending a lot of time on something that if we have consensus.
No, no, I mean, hearing from Tim, what he just said, it almost validates what they, not saying they were inflating it, but hearing that from Tim makes, hearing him out validates what Danielle just said as far as pricing of the generator. Now going back to do we need one or are we going to cross our fingers and not do with it or what are we gonna do?
I think that we flip the coin and we wait.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement, we'll take no action on three C.
Correct. So now the transfer needs to match, giving the funds for three B but not three C.
Well, I have two more questions on five, on what's, where are five, three B, which is oh five motion. So the contingency is ten percent. I thought I, I missed heard five percent is also a, a common construction.
You know, an old building.
It is. I mean, I was taking a conservative approach because of it being a historic building, because we're getting into, you know, some pretty major things with the elevator and things like that and sanitary piping and cutting up slats. So it's a, it's a bucket of money that, you know, stays in the town's fund for as needed, you know, anything that, any chain orders that are unforeseen condition.
So that number could down now.
That number could be anything. I mean, really.
You can set it wherever you want.
You can set it.
The problem is if you don't, it, it's a bucket of money that sits unless you need it. If you.
The ten percent.
You start weighing things. If you don't allocate enough and then you run into major problems, then you have to figure out where the money's.
Then you are starting to be over budget on things. That's when you're truly over budget. But now, hold on, so the ten percent is of the project containing the base bid and the elevator.
All alternates.
So does that go down?
Anyway, okay.
Okay, so can we recalculate that?
Yes, that could be recalculated.
My thought was though, if you, if you may eventually award all of the alternates, why not go all the way with the contingency now, you know?
I think we have.
Probably other means.
But, yeah, we can all take action.
But I think that the understanding is that if we go lower, then I think if you go lower than three hundred thousand, you all need to be understanding that you're dealing with an old building that could require some changes. So if you go lower than three hundred thousand, well, we can say whatever you want, but if, if I come back to you and I say you got something that's fifty thousand dollars more and went to two fifty and you all start calling me out for being over budget, I'm pretty.
Well, it's reasonable to, to look at the adjusted amount and set a ten percent contingency that. I would not go lower than ten percent.
So that's two fifty-nine. Two hundred and fifty-nine.
Well, what I'm, Mayor, I'm, I'm getting the sense that you are anticipating certain problems. Is there something that you're aware of?
Well, Jack, we took.
Jack, you want to.
We took.
We went to hang something.
Yeah. This wall.
Just knowing the building itself. I think you're gonna have some things that come up that to my.
I don't know what they are. Alright, I'm, I'm.
But.
I'll give you example, my office doesn't have crawl space above the ceiling at all. This is only my office right now.
Mine has three ceilings.
And asbestos ceiling.
Tim can tell you in this room, nothing, this will change with renovation. You go from what, two or three feet down to like ten inches. Not that that'll change with renovation, but it's an old building with lots of personality.
Right, so I think some things are optics sometimes. So I think if we do the ten percent contingency, if we go over, we approve it, we have it. Now, my last question, sorry Steve to cut you off there. This motion does include, please, furniture. So three hundred thousand dollars in furniture, can you, what's wrong with that table?
No.
What do you mean?
Like, I don't under, I don't, what is that?
Yeah, that's on the high end too.
The three hundred thousand is again, an all in number. It's not awarding a contract of this amount, it's just assigning the funds. We have a proposal for all new furniture that came at three hundred thousand. We are gonna, actually at the end of the month, I said, today, we're gonna go through an inventory of what stays and what we can knock off of that. That was what the designers brought. All in, you know, if we took, if we took all of this furniture and put it at another government office or whatever that may be and town hall got new furniture, that is, that is the number, but I anticipate.
But we know that we're not gonna replace it.
So let me.
So if anything has been replaced, what are you gonna do? Say, are we gonna auction it off, sell it, make some money?
We're gonna let other departments have dibs. We're gonna put it, we're gonna have a yard sale, flood sale, fire sale, whatever you want to call it, which people can come in and yard sale it.
Sarah, you wanna turn it into a bidding board like the last time?
No.
Mayor, don't, don't worry about the numbers, so have it in front of you.
Okay, so just for my.
Natalie's got her computer, she's calculating.
Yeah, so this motion now of twenty twenty-six, and we can't, we have public comments still, but this motion now of twenty twenty-six dash zero five has turned into approving the construction of Keller Brothers three, two million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand and alternate number three elevator additional cost of two oh four nine ninety with a contingency of ten percent. Natalie?
Two fifty-nine.
I'm suggesting to leave the motion twenty twenty-six dash oh five unchanged, eliminate twenty twenty-six dash oh four completely and eliminate twenty twenty-six dash oh six completely.
But what is the contingency amount with the changes?
We will leave the contingency as it is right now.
I think that there's group consensus to give two sixty on the contingency.
Okay.
So I think that, I think that's reasonable.
Two sixty would be ten percent of the two million, three ninety-one plus the two oh four nine nine.
And my gut said three hundred, but I just.
And.
The base construction.
Or you could.
That three hundred thousand we're not doing right now.
What's that?
That three hundred thousand is not gonna be part of the twenty twenty-six.
Danielle, is it the base construction and the elevator, ten percent of it?
Yes.
Just very.
So Jack asked a question about furniture. Yes, we do need a budget for furniture. Keep in mind, the police department, we spent what, ninety-ish thousand?
The capital reserve here.
And that's one quarter. And you got six of them in here.
She's, she want any number, any number you want.
I would, I would like the motion twenty, twenty-six dash zero five to include construction, the alternate, the new contingency number and the furniture and what that total is, please.
Okay.
It's three million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars.
That includes the two sixty.
I don't, your voice got a lot deeper.
That includes the, the contingency of ten percent, two hundred, just under two hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
Alright, so for the record, for everybody, we're at the base bid of two million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, contingency of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is roughly ten percent of the construction cost, removing the alternates from motion twenty twenty-six dash zero six. Three hundred thousand, seven hundred and three dollars furniture, that's a high end. And an alternate for number, alternate number three for the elevator, two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
So when we, I hate to ask another question, I apologize. No, I don't apologize, I'm asking questions. When will we have the, when do you anticipate coming back to us with the harder numbers, the more firm numbers on furniture, or is that kinda still up in there?
It's up in the air. Because we have to determine exactly what we are keeping and what we aren't.
And you'll have maybe some stuff that's sold that would be surplus, but that comes here before it's surplus and why with better understanding of what, like Mary said, would save and what's not.
Yeah.
We'd love to refurnish the entire building, so everything's matching and it's all very high end looking, but that's not reasonable and we're not, we're not aiming for that.
I think it's an important point. So the three hundred thousand dollars does not include the fancy subchairs.
No, no.
Because it does seem like a high number.
And we're keeping, you know, it was based on every chair, every file cabinet, every desk, but we're not going.
Eighteen offices that have to be furnished as well as customer service space and the mail room and, I mean, all these things, you know, but yeah, eighteen, I think.
Although I will tell you, I am looking forward to the desk, but I don't have to put tape on to.
You're absolutely, I understand.
But it escapes my point, if somebody's watching at home, right, and you hear three hundred thousand dollars for furniture, that's a big number. We don't disagree with that, but we also have to make sure that the staff that come to work have the ability to have the equipment they need to be able to do their jobs.
Yeah, exactly. My whole point coming tonight was I wanna be able to defend the, the project.
Absolutely.
And again, as presented over the weekend and, you know, we've got a packet, that was really hard. I was like, stop your sale.
It is, and, and.
Well, but keep in mind, like.
These motions had a lot of conversation, but like I said, we've got to put numbers on paper to start conversation. And the other side is that. We knew it wouldn't end up, yeah.
It's not really my job or Mary's job or Danielle's job or Natalie's job to say, nope, council, you don't get to decide on this, nope, you don't get to decide on that. We gave you the last, and we intended to have a conversation.
Yep, I respect that, I love that. We stood with it. So then this now, this total motion of twenty two thousand, oh my gosh, twenty twenty-six dash zero five, now totals three million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two.
Correct.
Correct. Now, yeah, in a moment, but Natalie, are you saying we can do all this in one motion or should we adjust?
No, you will have to just, I wasn't accounting for actual architectural, engineering, design amount, so just looking at the project itself, but motion two, two, two zero two six dash oh four, unassigned to assigned capital, this amount should be, let's round it to a million forty-five.
So one million, forty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
I've lost track of my decimals.
One, comma, zero, four, five, comma, zero, zero, zero.
So why don't we, we're gonna, for the matter of public comment, we are planning to address motion 2026-04 with a fund transfer of $1,045,000, and we are planning to address motion 2026-05 totaling $3,156,292, containing a base bid of $2,391,000, contingency of $260,000, furniture of $300,703, and an alternate number three for the elevator, $204,990. We are not planning to move forward with motion 2026-06. Is that an accurate summary here, everyone?
Yes.
Alright.
And these will be redone, they're not gonna be scratched.
Scratch out. So anyone that would like to address the mayor and council regarding those two motions? Just name and street name if you don't mind.
Yeah, Gina, Intrepid Lane. I just wanted, there was a lot of talking. Clarification of what the base construction bid is, so that's your plumbing, correct, your HVAC?
Danielle's.
Oh, sorry, Danielle. That's your plumbing, your HVAC, patching, is that what that is?
It's a full renovation of this building, so I mean, it all finishes, lighting, ceilings, yep, gutting it, reconfiguring all the offices, even developing some more new offices, moving planning over into this building, reconfiguring the main, the rear entrance in the parking lot for customer service, so it is a full renovation plus the elevator, all in.
Okay, that, that's all I wanted.
We didn't cut anything, you know, infrastructure-wise.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted clarification, because it got a little confusing. Thank you.
And we're discussing, because we've gone back and forth so many times, and are not really explaining it well, so it's glad that, I'm glad that you asked for clarification. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council?
Yeah.
Just name and street.
Austin Purnell, Prospect Drive. Appreciate everyone talking about it. I understand we have a lot of needs in this town. Councilman Green spoke as well. A lot of these are outside of Town Hall, and I think we just wanna keep that in focus as well. Do what you gotta do in this building, but really try to, you know, get tight on it. 300 grand furniture sounds insane. I mean, ask anybody, it does. I appreciate the clarification, you know, getting to the nuts and bolts of it, scaling back a little bit, but I just hope we all remember what we need and what we want. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take action by the council on motion 2026-04.
So I'll make a motion, 2026-04, pass it for $1,045,000.
So a motion by councilmember Merk?
Second.
Second by councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
I have a problem with furniture, I'm sorry. It's really, it gives me heart balls.
Okay.
And I just feel like it's high, personally.
But put it in, just for perspective, because I felt the same thing. And what I asked Natalie was, how much did we spend on furniture for the police department, right? Because that's the most recent building we built. I think it was roughly, what, $90,000?
Right, but you can compare a police officer.
I know, but for my head, I had to try, like, by the way.
Cupid bowl, desk and a chair, to today's price of an office furniture, they come into chipping.
I'm getting, I'm getting, hold on, hold on.
I know, I know, but it's not comparable.
Different departments, right? So like Natalie's saying, most of the full-time equipment's at the police station, do not, the police department, do not work in a typical office with file cabinets and all those things that you need in offices that we're building out. You have one department for roughly $90,000 in furniture. You have six departments for $300,000 in furniture. You're talking about, in my brain, I felt the same thing, Austin, where Austin left. But you're saying the same thing that I was like, man, that's a lot of money in furniture, right? And I've seen the plans, and I don't see the gold-plated anything, right? Like, I don't see that. So.
Would you guys be, would you guys be acceptable to cut in that amount in half?
Well, we can't, I don't think you can.
I would, I would.
Or would you say just get rid of it completely? I'm asking these two.
Get rid of office furniture?
I'm, I'm asking, Steve and Jack did not agree to this motion. I'm asking, where do we go? I'm asking.
I'm asking the question.
IKEA, that's where you.
Oh, 250.
Yeah, and this also.
Like, what's the basis? That's what I'm asking. Like, when, when you come up with a number outside of being high, right? Like, I, I can look at numbers and say, they're really high, I'd like them to be lower. However, what's the basis for that decision?
My, everything to me is about justifying it to the public.
I agree, I agree, but also we have, I think I had a conversation with one of you up here, that asked a little bit about, like, the job and role that I have, right? Well, I've often said that I have multiple constituencies, right? Like, I have the business community, I have the residents of Berlin that may not be part of the business community, I have the employees that have to come to work here every day, right? So I hear the residential side, and some of the business owners say, man, that's a lot of money. I don't disagree with that. But, and I also understand what it takes for our departments to be able to function, and the fact that they've been holding the basics together with duct tape and.
Two by fours.
Yeah, whatever they can find. And I, I hear this, hey, keep, keep in perspective of the needs outside of just Town Hall. We are. We're walking, chewing gum, we're juggling 10 things in the air. Like, we are doing that. But it doesn't have to be mutually exclusive here, right? Like, our staff cannot work in a closet, and that's okay. We can build something that's suitable for them to be able to work in, right?
And I should add that that $300,000, again, this is not an award of a contract for that amount. This is a budgetary evaluation, but also that $300,000 included free delivery, assembly, installation. So there is some soft costs in there from the furniture, you know, procurement folks, and it is not just offices. We're talking conference room, we're talking waiting room for customer service, customer service, you know, things like that. Back room, this room.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we approve?
We can share the package with you.
Why don't we approve the $300,703 contingent on an itemized list of what we're ordering? Then it's built on facts. We can say, man, you ordered 35, or wanna order 35, found a cabinet set of gold plating, that's a little absurd. I think that it's reasonable to say, this is the money that we're gonna put off to the side, but we wanna see itemized kind of what that is.
I'll go with that, for transparency.
Do you wanna see the itemized?
Do I really want to?
Before you agree to that part?
Before any, before any expenditure goes out, I think it's reasonable. Fully reasonable.
I think it's.
I think, okay. I, I think that showing.
I'm asking you, because I don't want you to agree to something that doesn't sit well with you, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I understand.
And if it's not a whole with $300,000, that's why I said, make it half, we're done. What do you want?
I understand everything that's been sent up here after a clarification, but I think that sometimes just showing an effort goes a long way.
There's been considerable.
Towards, towards just.
Put into this audit project.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying up here as an elected body, this is the first time we're seeing this.
Yeah, but the comment sometimes makes it seem like, and I, I don't know if you intend it this way, which is why I'm gonna share.
Well, tell me in the office.
Yeah, it makes the, like, it's kinda like the budget, right? So when we bring the budget forward for public consideration, right, it would be the same approach of saying, well, hold on, let me, give me some.
I agree with that.
So when we meet in this small group, we've already whittled that sucker down quite a bit, right?
Right.
And I think that the public, as well as the body, should know that there's been considerable effort to try and whittle this thing down as much as we possibly can.
And my intent was not to say that that was not happening, which probably came out wrong. My intent was up here, after we hear the concerns and factor in the whittled down numbers, having discussions like we're having, where Steve was like, hey, can we do this? And we explained why we couldn't, or we should, we might not be able to. I think instead of just rubber stamping and saying, $300, seems high, but we're gonna do it. Having the discussions we're here, that's what I was referring to as making an effort up here on our end.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure you're right.
I did not mean to insult staff or anything like that, that was not.
No, I am clear.
I was not, that was not the intention. I was speaking more on this side of the dais, where we get the information and we have to decide what's best for Berlin.
And hearing that, I think a good compromise and a reasonable diligence would be, we know that number's higher than it needs to be. Where exactly? We don't know yet. But what we can do is we can say, alright, let's, let's earmark that, and let's picture that as the full cost, but we're not gonna move any expenditure, like, pay any expenditure for that until we bring an itemized list of what will actually be procured, or asked to be procured, to this body for diligence. I think that's perfectly reasonable.
We can add that to the motion.
Yep.
And also to clarify, if this amount is at that amount, what we stayed in right now, it will come below when we come to the reality of purchasing, installing, putting it together. If Tim could purchase a generator out of here as a saving from the furniture, or something come below the cost, it doesn't mean because you've approved the funding in the amount of, we're just gonna spend it up to the penny, making sure that everybody have two desks instead of one. Staff will put time and effort to minimize this expense as we do for every single project of the Town of Berlin. Look, the electric department installing the meters by themselves in the cold weather, because we did not hire the contractor. I assure you, Public Works will pitch in to put those desks if needed, to put that together. It is not gonna be expensed up to the highest amount, what you have proven right now for the furniture. It is an estimate cost for the entirety of the Town Hall furniture renovations. If something could be purchased cheaper, we will. We always operate on that concept.
Okay. I think that we're ready to move on.
Alright, so one question, Natalie. When it's all said and done, this project shakes out, and there's money left over, let's say we want to spend half the.
It stays in capital reserves.
It stays in there, we'll go back to on a sign. Well, somebody had asked earlier how he ended up with the money in these accounts in the first place, and it comes through the diligence that Natalie's talking about, as well as good conservative budgeting, because when we budget, we, we try our best to project those costs, but then diligence is applied along the way. If we can get it for cheaper, we're getting it for cheaper. If we have the ability to move and save money at the end of the year, we're not just running every single department to the needle and, like she said, expensing everything. That's how you end up building these fund reserves over time.
So I'll, I'll add to my motion that no money will be spent on furniture until this council body has a chance to renew it in detail.
Correct, but can we add that to motion 2026-05?
Yeah, I think we need, we need 04 with the.
$1,045,000.
Now, you did already take a motion to vote on that?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
We, I, I called for a vote, but it was only two. And then I had a quiet. So a motion by councilmember Merk, I'll restate the motion, to approve motion 2026-04 in the amount of $1,045,000. And I have a second by councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not saying, man, did we just, did we disconnect again?
That was, that was.
That was four, that was unanimous with Vice President Barrel absent. Thank you. Motion 2026-04 passes.
It's amended.
Has amended. Now, up next, can I state what I think is the understanding of motion 2026-05?
And we will gladly correct.
I'm okay with that. I am really okay with that. That's why we're here. Three, it totals $3,156,292. It includes, did I get it wrong?
Yeah, please state that.
2026-05.
Yes.
The amount total is $3,156,693. That change in the contingency to 260, base of 2.391.
I didn't trust the math, that's why I was always summarizing.
300, 307.3 for the furniture, and 204,990 for the elevator.
Okay, so I have $3,156,693. I have the base bid, $2,391,000. I have the contingency of 10% of the construction without the alternates from motion 2026-06 coming to $260,000.
We're rounding to 260.
$260,000. Furniture, $300,703, not to be expensed until the council, the mayor and council see an itemized list of items that would like to be procured, an action by this body. Alternate number three elevator, $204,990. Is that?
That is.
That's how everybody recalls the motion? Okay, good, I'll take a motion to work. Okay, so I have a motion by councilmember Nichols, second. Second by councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the votes unanimously, and motion 2026-05 has amended, passes. Thank you.
So when we have the list, we'll make sure that the line item or agenda item, so that those who are following along.
There'll be a motion for approval, I guess.
Right.
Yep.
So I think Roberts wrote the order that someone needs to motion a table, serious.
No, you didn't, you haven't, it just.
I can take no action.
Yeah, you're taking no action. Doesn't need, if you don't make a motion to pass it, it just, like, correct, Dave?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. Let's move along. Thank you all. Thank you, Danielle. I greatly appreciate it. Good job. Alright, let's see. I moved my clips, and I identified my agenda for this one.
Thank you, Danielle.
There we are. Alright.
Boom, boom.
No action. Alright, up next is motion 2026-07, alcohol permit request for Berlin celebrates vintage and vinyl for Record Store Day, Saturday, April 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and a rain date for Sunday, April 19th. An economic and community development director, Ido Els, is gonna run one.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I am requesting a motion of the mayor and council to approve alcohol sales for Berlin Vintage and Vinyl celebrating Record Store Day on Saturday, April 18th, 2026, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, April 19th, 2026. This event was already pre-approved when we presented our event, but we just, we weren't sure about alcohol permit at the time, and that's why we're coming to you now. The Worcester County Alcohol Permit will be submitted by local nonprofit Destination Growth Partners, run by Ann Hillier, who was previously, who we previously partnered with for Oktoberfest 2025. This will be the fourth event with alcohol in 2026.
Thank you. Any questions for either?
Tell me the alcohol number again, because that was what I was actually wondering.
This is only four.
Okay. I mean, I had to ask him from the, from the, from councilmember Barrel, or my, because I know that would have been.
Alright. Any further discussion by the council? Okay, open it up to the public. Anyone that would like to comment on motion 2026-07? Alright, seeing none, take action by the council. So the first out of motion by councilmember Horace?
Second.
Second by councilmember Merk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the votes unanimously with Vice President Barrel absent, and motion 2026-07 passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is agenda item 3E, motion 2026-08, declaration of surplus property, and it says interim chief of police, Robert Fisher, but we have Sergeant Collins, thank you.
Sergeant Collins, Berlin Police Department, we're just asking for the handgun to be placed in surplus. It is a duty handgun that will be purchased by one of our officers that would done it fast.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Sergeant Collins? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll take action.
Motion approved, 2026.
So a motion by councilmember Merk?
Second.
Second by councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Uh, motion 2026-08 passed unanimously with Vice President Barrel absent. Thank you, Sergeant Collins. Up next is motion 3F, 2026-09, exempt employees' vacation carryover, and I have Cal State running.
Good evening. As you may know from our handbook, non-exempt employees can carry 240 hours of vacation, as well as exempt employees, but non-exempt employees also have the option to carry 240 comp time, which department directors exempt employees do not. So this just levels it so that they can all carry a total of 200, I'm sorry, 480 hours on an annual basis, which is 12 weeks, FMLA, God forbid someone has a major illness or something, it just kinda levels out, believe, available for department heads as well as staff, so.
Thank you. And I'm gonna add just a little bit to that as well. Historically, I do action, I've actioned a handful over six years or seven years for certain department heads that maybe have a large amount of vacancies in their department, and maybe needed a one-off exemption to carry that time forward for a defined period of time. Typically, I don't do any longer than a 12-month period, but with vacancies and training, our department heads really don't.
And sometimes our work clones alone don't allow that flexibility, so.
So I think that for best practice, rather than actioning these off on a one, one-off basis, I'd rather have it in a policy.
And that is a total of, I believe, 10 employees, including, you know, all works and staff, so.
Alright, so open it up to any council comments or questions?
Cal State just had a question. If you look at page 20, if you look at the handout copy, page 20, the, the only question I have is, I don't understand why the bold Town Initiative will not approve any carryover for a vacation time for one fiscal year to the next.
That's actually existing, like.
Yeah, I would say it's existing bold, and I think we put it in there because we kept having people make that request to Mary, as that.
Or, or by predecessors.
Yes, yeah, but we were just trying to make it clear that that's not something, it's always been in there, but we bolded it in our last update because they technically are approved by the mayor, so we were just, I can't really remember, to be honest, why we bolded it, but we didn't change that.
I was just reading it, vacation to carry over, and then it says, well, not be approved. So I was just a little confused, but if you're, I'll agree with it, it's definitely.
Yeah, and actually, I think I mentioned this, I know we did the handbook a few years ago as a full revamp, but I'm working through the Shurm Handbook Builder right now, because they have attorneys that are there to review each section you have. They update you on updates, so I get emails saying, hey, this portion of your handbook, the laws have changed, and this is now something that needs to change along with that. So I'm still working through that, so this, I wanted to get this before we start doing vacation buyback, but I am still working through the new handbook.
I'm sure it's out there, following door of change.
It, it really, really is. Yeah, so.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public, any comments or questions regarding motion 2026-09. Alright, seeing none, we'll take action by the council. Got a motion by councilmember Horace, a second by councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the motion 2026-09, passed unanimously with Vice President Barrel absent. Alright, thank you. Up next is the item number four, PJM quarterly report, and our electric utility director, Tim Lawrence.
Good evening, mayor and council. We're required by the Public Service Commission to present the quarterly PJM report in the home setting, public setting. Energy sold for the months from July through September of '25 was $12,255,46. The AMP bill, which is American Municipal Power, for a member of that, their bill for handling the purchased power was $493,432. PJM charges were $398,972. PJM ARR credit was $87,146. Fuel load, other cost for the power was $40,647. The total power cost was $845,904, and the cost per KWH sold was 0.06902.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Any questions for Tim? Usually, uh, very technical, but thank you for your report. Alright, um, let's see, up next, agenda item five, update from the department subcommittee to the council, council member Green's gonna run point. Uh, no, so council member Green and, uh, council member Nerr and I, uh, serve on the department subcommittee, uh, trying to find some direction forward for covering the need of repairs for the downtown business district parking. Um, from what I recall from our last meeting, we were not able to reach consensus on a paid, uh, event parking, um, plan, we were not able to reach a clear consensus on, um, even an allocation, which was a running theory from the business community that we could increase, uh, the, uh, business license fees to cover a portion of what paid parking would generate an income. I think that, uh, the feedback we received is probably some, um, approach that takes multiple different things into consideration, like maybe we do some paid parking for events, maybe we do some increase on the business license fee, and then I believe there was one idea that I had referenced Monopoly before, like the free parking, but really what the, the idea or theory was to use the, um, like a campaign for getting people to wanna voluntarily pay for parking, um, and do some sort of an initiative town-wide to see if that would work, so, it's kind of where the thoughts are at this moment, council member Nerr, council member Green filling the gaps if I'm missing anything, but that's the basis of the last meetings and stuff, I think.
Yeah, I think we've had, um, a lot of feedback, you know, we've heard, heard from a lot of people, um, you know, keep coming back to this sheet that has one million dollars in, um, expenditures that are needed for our municipal lots, uh, not just to approve the surface, but the stuff you can't see, um, and then we have the quasi-public parking lots as well that we have to work through, so it's a very complicated issue, um, with, um, I said, you used to bang the head on the wall because if I left, that's what I felt concussed every time, you know, from these meetings, because we are throwing things out, trying to come up with something, um, and really, it's not even a matter of trying to reach the majority, um, or even slight majority, we're just running into, um, opposition from, you know, I do want to discuss some things that we could talk about, it's just so folks know that, um, where we are, we can talk about paid parking, of course, we talked about events parking, events paid parking, we talked about our center payment fee that is done in other, uh, towns, where it would be given every transaction, it would be a, a fee on to go towards parking, um, and we talked about the business license increase instead of, um, paid parking, um, we were told by a smaller subcommittee that that was something that was palpable, um, that we conducted a survey where we, um, heard from people that that was not something that they wanted to have done, so, um, you know, I guess you, the mayor's right, one of the things at the end was to, um, put up some signs and maybe social media where, um, town relents trying to keep parking free, um, and, you know, I think that's a lovely idea, I just, um, it's not gonna get us to where we need to be to meet these numbers, um, that's why, um, you know, earlier, I was talking about just trying to find some sort of mechanism to address the ticking, um, issues that we have, and, uh, we're really, no lack of effort, we've all tried very hard, we've all allocated a lot of time, we've had a lot of staff member time in it as well, um, but we're really back to, um, no solution at this point, so, um, you know, I keep coming back to potential grants, um, it takes a lot of time for somebody to research a grant, to do it, I'm willing to volunteer time to do that, it's kind of, I think, steering in the right direction. Um, also, now I'll come back to some of this capital funding that potentially could be available to knock out some of the town-owned lots, um, you know, rather than the quasi-public parking, we have a couple lots that are in worse shape than others, um, so that's really, um, I rambled, we wasn't prepared today, but that's really where we are, and I appreciate if we have to be, for transparency's sake, we should have, I think, the public, what has been happening.
And grant-wise, there may be, Sarah might not be prepared to speak on it now, but, go ahead.
About the earmark grant?
Well, about the, um, transportation grant, that has to be larger than, uh.
I did do some, um, exploration into the build grant, which, um, is from Federal Highway, and, you know, because it's transportation-related, but, um, the input feedback that I got back from them was that it's not enough money, that it would be, um, that build projects are way more significant than one, two, or three million dollars, for example, the bike weights in, um, the Eastern Shore, Virginia, just received twenty-five million dollars for a build grant, so.
We're talking about.
I have a lot of ideas about ways to spend, you know, and apply for build grant money, but I don't think that this is the right fit for it, then the other.
Not without grouping.
There's the community development.
Yeah, I looked into the community development law grant, um, as well, because that's one that I've been managing for the community center, and, um, where we are with that is that we have received funds from CDBG to demolish the multipurpose building, and we have not expended, you know, expensed those funds yet, so we were not encouraged to apply for the community center at this time until we spend that money to demolish. No, no, I mean, like, at that, at that time, so that we weren't really eligible, and then if we try to, we won't be able to spend that money before the next round, so it's open to have a new grant application for parking and parking lot. Um, and then the other option that I've looked into is our earmark funding, as you know, we were just successfully awarded one point four million dollars in earmark funding for the community center, um, and my, um, you know, impression under, and that too, is that we can apply again for as many earmark grants as we would like, I think that, um, it doesn't exactly meet the criteria, but that it's something that we can try, and those sort of grant applications are formed, we can hear it a shot, um, but I think that there are other projects, um, especially including infrastructure related to the public works building, that might be a better fit, um, but, there's, you know, there are other grants as well.
I just want to clarify one thing that Sarah said, just because it's, it's a wording that confuses people sometimes, when she says we have received a grant for the demolition of the multipurpose building, we do not have money sitting in the bank, we have been awarded a grant, and we will receive the funds once we spend it.
Right, it's a reimbursable grant, thank you.
And go ahead and state the bid opening.
It's March eighteen. And this will be a, this will be a relatively simple project, assuming the bids come in within budget, it should be logical to work after that.
The other thing is that, um, like Steve said, we keep arriving at like almost no action, uh, by the consensus, by consensus with the group, and with that, um, we explain that if we try the free parking campaign route, and it's not successful, that we then need to figure out what the next alternative path would be.
I mean, it was crystal clear from the majority of the, uh, department committee that they want nothing to do with paid parking, they, it would be extremely detrimental to business downtown, in fact, they use the term, it would kill business downtown, we heard that over and over. Um, I kind of agree with councilman Green about the, you know, donation aspect or project, like, we've been putting a lot of time and energy into that, it's very little results, um, I don't know how long you can get into that for.
I don't even know if I really want to get into that, nor do we have the staff to really be able to drive the bus on that, but, we've got a kind of.
It's like a QR code potentially where you can scan, um, I'm thinking, right?
I believe the example, if you want to know, about the amount of money the fire department, because the fire department does for their.
Right, so before, you know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, this problem's been around for decades, but just to keep it local for reference and context here, the Berlin Fire Company, they set a boot out and they do the same thing for, uh, our events downtown, and I think that they, they make maybe what, a few hundred dollars each event for, for generous people, and I think that people would be more inclined to donate to the fire company than just, hey, keep parking free, but you pay so everyone else doesn't have to, um, I, I just, I, I think that it's, it's potentially a waste of our time, with the amount of money that is needed, um, I'm, I'm going to echo what, uh, council member Green said, I think that it's really important to maintain first and foremost, the lots that the town owns first, at least get those done, especially the lot next to Ruder Hill, the lot behind Town Hall, and the post office lot.
I think we need to do a reset as to how we look at this project, I mean, we throw out this cost of one point three million, and that scares people.
Right.
It's a lot of money, I think we should look at it project by project and say, okay, let's just look at it in phase, we'll take the Commerce Street lot first, what is that gonna cost, and how can we work on it?
I agree a hundred percent.
That's a hundred and seventy-eight, recorded, that's zero.
One, they have those numbers right on the wall, and so they would, they would need to be adjusted, yeah, but let's just focus on that one project, get it done, and move forward.
But we also, I, I don't dispute that we need to phase how we handle that, we've always talked about that even in the subcommittee group, about phasing the project, but we've got to be cautious about how we fund it, because we have the lease that we all agreed to enter into for the parking lot, which we gave ourselves two years by design with ARPA funds, and, but that's still a pretty hefty fraction of the penny on the tax rate, so that is a cost that will need to be realized, at least I think in, in some way, a half year probably for this next budget cycle.
But we also know that lots haven't been used during events.
I'm not disputing use, I'm, I'm saying how we cover the cost, right, and where that cost is burdened, because we've talked about like how we have multiple priorities, but if we then, you, we all know how the residents are gonna feel if we are now expending a sizable amount of money for parking downtown from the general fund without a way to really show contributions to cover those expenditures.
All I'm saying is, let's not talk about it in terms of one point three million, but talk about it in terms of what we can actually.
I, I don't dis, I don't dispute that, but we gotta have a mechanism for paying for it, yeah.
So I, I just, I appreciate the update, though, this is, this is awesome, I have a question, was there, or what was the reasoning behind event-only paid parking? Was that a?
Should I get more powerful?
You'd be the opposition to it?
Yeah, what was the reason?
I was, I was probably the biggest surprise we've brought this whole process, I would have thought that that would have been something that we could have moved forward with, um, and it's, you know, listen, I mean, if it was closer to the middle, you know, or something to where it was like, you know, we all don't have, it's, you know, it's unanimous, it's impossible actually, you know, to have a whole group of people that everybody agree, and it was just this robust opposition, this feeling that it's, um, a step in the right cor, a step in the correction of paid parking, um, but, I mean, to Zach's point, you know, with that lot, I mean, we, I do feel we have a responsibility to the citizens not to, um, work that lease amount into the, the general fund.
To the best we can.
Right.
We're okay, like, it doesn't have to cover itself, I don't blame anybody saying that, but we gotta make progress, and we're not really making that, right?
Right.
Not by a non-willingness by our group to try and find some way, but I think we're failing to gain any sense of consensus, even with a, um, slim majority.
Yeah, it's just really, is, um, paid parking is just, um, it's, it's just no.
I was just curious, I mean, as a small business owner, I mean, if, if we have never had it, and you're, we're talking about it, I can see the fear, um, yeah, okay, well, thanks.
Wish we had more share.
Yeah.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to put on the gun.
Thanks for working on. Alright, up next, agenda item six, an announcement for the special Sunday permit vote that was done via poll vote, the mayor is running point on this, but it is summarizing the packet.
It is, uh, we received a request on Friday, January twenty-third, for a special Sunday permit for yesterday, um, this wouldn't have been too late to make the agenda for the twenty-sixth, had we held the meeting on the twenty-sixth, which we, of course, had canceled because of the snow, so, rather than telling them, sorry to, to the whole vote, um, this is something that, you know, the council has always approved, I had no expectation that that would be a, not a great.
They used to just be signed at the mayor's office, but I like to share the, um, the love when it comes to this, um, I like to have the groups by, and I think it goes a long way for the legion as well as.
Did you, did you say what year that was?
Uh, yeah, I believe it is their annual.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Alright, now, up next are departmental reports and town administrators' report, before we get into that, uh, we did receive, uh, we should have the Tim's group, what's that? Oh, no, no, I have, that's, sorry. Um, we did receive a, uh, thank you letter, appreciation letter, uh, from Joe Moore to the electric department, but I think it summarized how a lot of people felt, especially when it was very, very cold outside, um, thanking the electric utility department for their work during the power outage, and, uh, during the high winds, cold temperatures, uh, when all of us were inside our homes being warm, uh, to the best of our ability, even with power being out, you guys were out there, um, dealing with the frigid temperatures and the wind, so thank you.
It was actually very chilling.
Oh, I bet.
In fact, one of the employees opened a Coke bottle and it froze within about forty minutes.
Wow.
So, so it was cold, and, very chilly.
But thank you for working on that, you want to just give the group a summary of what, uh, what happened?
Uh, Saturday, I received a call from the police department around three o'clock, uh, they started telling me about all these different streets were out, and then I knew just from that, I knew Circuit two, two-ten was out, because I know the routes, uh, so at that point, we had to figure out what the issue was, we got the crew in here, started writing the line out to try to figure out what happened, and then we received a call, uh, that there was a tree down off of Buckingham Lane, on one of those little side roads that go into those pine trees there, and what we found out is a tree in the backyard of the property, it actually uprooted from the ground level, it was probably, I would guess, forty feet tall, and it fell across the entire power line, it broke one pole off, and then it broke another pole off down from it, broke the top out of it, and then the, uh, main feed pole that was out on Buckingham, it actually pulled it over about three feet into the pine trees. So then we had to go around, open some switches, backseat everybody, and I'd say we had everybody back on, and originally it was seven hundred and eighty-something customers that were out of power, and that happened at three o'clock, and I think by probably six or so, six or seven, we had it down to two, uh, customers that were out.
Two.
And then they were out, uh, until we got the pole replaced, we got everything repaired. During that timeframe, we had another outage that occurred over on Cedar Avenue, where a fuse melted, and that probably took out thirty or forty homes over there, so we had to, some of us had to leave there, go to Cedar, get their power back on, come back over there, uh, we finally got out of the shop and finished up around, it was like twelve forty-five AM in the morning, uh, just to let you know how, how much load there was, the highest load that I've seen in sixteen years of being here was during the polar vortex, uh, it was fifteen point four megawatts, and at one o'clock AM, uh, Sunday morning, we were sitting at fourteen point three, at one o'clock in the morning. Uh, I was very surprised at that, but it's because of cold weather and all that, then we had another power outage occur on Sunday on William Street, which was a fuse that actually melted from being overloaded, uh, we had that back on within an hour.
And we had a little bit of power trouble this morning that you were working through in Slade Street?
Yep, we had a blink on Circuit two-thirty, uh, which actually draws the entire substation down, and you might see that cross the entire town of Berlin, and then, uh, that was the issue over on Grand Avenue, we took care of that.
Yeah, I saw that flicker this morning, it was whole.
Yep, and, uh, also in generation, uh, for the past two weeks, Casey and Brian have pretty much been on standby the entire time for two weeks, uh, out of those fourteen days, we ran eight times, eight times out of fourteen days, uh, to keep up at the peak, and we hit every peak we did in the center.
Thank you, we really appreciate it. Alright, let's go back to, uh, the top of this, which is the town administrators' report, and then the departmentals that are in the packet.
Um, along with the electric crew and water, we're also out, quite busy, uh, this weekend, freezing and thawing, and freezing and thawing make for very difficult circumstances, um, so the water department was out dealing with the freezing water and the freezing cold, which, I, I just, I mean, I just cringe when I even think about you guys out up in poles and down in water, and, um, had to, of course, run the generator to keep the wastewater plant running, it's, it's quite taxing on our departments, that's what they're there for, of course, but it, it really is, uh, very impactful. Along with my report, I want to make sure to thank, uh, the police department, Sergeant Collins in particular for organizing Arnold's retirement, um, shindig where we were all nice and warm in the grand hotel while Tim was out on a pole somewhere. It was a very, very nice, very nice moment.
Tim was on the ground, the other guys.
Somebody asked. That is pretty cold there too, yeah. Just a couple of things, uh, this coming Monday, the 16th, most town offices will be closed, um, in recognition of President's Day. The first of several, uh, public sessions regarding the comp plan updates will be held on the 18th, like next Thursday or two Thursdays, um, at six o'clock PM. It is an initial work session with the company that's doing the updates and the mayor, council and planning commission, but we're encouraging the public to, you know, to be involved throughout the process, uh, and to attend or at least watch on Facebook to get a sense of how, how the process is going to go and go from there. And then I will be out for the rest of this week.
We also say happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Sorry.
Happy birthday. That's my number, I just stick with it.
Oh, okay.
All right. So I have a question. I'm sorry. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's not a question. No, here. Happy birthday. Was there any issues that you were working to ask Jamie with the Broad Street Lit Station? Because now it's not, it's not in a building now, so I'm just wondering, was there any issues with the cold?
I will ask. I, I'm not aware of anything, but I will ask.
The only thing I know.
But the configuration's not a new.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing I know, and I shared with you the other day, um, when I was out there, they had a couple of alarms that were coming from it. But it was just typical.
Right.
With that type of system to have those trouble alarms sometime. But, I mean, Jamie can probably share a much better report. I was just curious. Was that?
The Atlanta cost?
No, because it was, I can't recall what day it was, yeah.
Well, the temperatures and then the wind, I mean, it's just been a lot.
I mean, it was cold.
It's been winter.
Yeah. Yes, it has been.
Anything else? Anything for Mary or from the department heads that are here tonight?
Yeah, well, good. Well, I was just gonna, I was gonna do this in my comments, but, uh, I just want to again thank our town crews, I mean, public works, water, electric, everyone involved. Um, it's really been since New Year's. I mean, horrible conditions and a little treacherous and getting services prepared and responded to in an amazing time. You know, the email that we received is, is kudos and, you know, Jimmy, Tom, Tim and Jamie, if he's listening, I'm sure he's watching. Um, thank you for your leadership and, you know, please pass, pass on my thanks, our thanks to your crews. Thank you.
All right, uh, let's move on to comments from the public. Anyone that would like to address the mayor and council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the council. We'll start with council member Ward.
Well, uh, thank you for everything. As Mary, as Mary alluded to, um, Saturday, was it, was it awesome evening celebrating Chief Downing's retirement, which I would also be able to attend? It's truly a great event and, you know, I also thank him for his service, leadership and dedication and wishing the very best. Also, last week I had the pleasure of representing Berlin by attending the 2026 Mayor's Prayer Breakfast in Ocean City. That was also a great event with a former Raven player.
Good for you. Maybe you'll already.
I was saying, you're not a shout out.
He was a good speaker, Harry Swain, uh, he gave the keynote address and I also got to sit with the, uh, Delmar, this is their name, the Delmarvo Leatherneck Foundation, uh, which is an awesome veteran advocacy group, so, so that's, that's pretty cool there. And, um, um, I'm, I'm gonna be as quick as I can about, about this one, but this past week, uh, we also had a historic commission meeting and I think it might have been the most viewed livestream since we started online meetings. But, but, um, there were spirited explanations and positions expressed by everyone and I'm not interested in reliving everything tonight that happened there, but I do have some questions. So I'm gonna use my Jack's HVAC entity and this is just some clarifications for me, so please indulge. So if Jack's HVAC company is in historic district and they want to do some sort of thing that requires historic district approval, what is the process to do that and is there a fee?
There, eh, there is an application to appear before the historic district commission. I cannot off the top of my head speak to that.
Okay, well, just say X, X amount.
And they submit their materials and go before the commission and the commission reviews it and the board asks for clar, changes, clarifications.
So what is the process then, if they, then after the fact, is what we saw, you, um, what is the process for that? So somebody, I do, I go ahead and do the work. And then I'm.
There's a couple.
I'm told or I'm aware or I remember that I was supposed to get approval. So do I just pay the, pay that fee and have it approved?
You have to submit your application and come before the board for approval. Technically, if the work is not correct for the historic district or there are other factors, just general construction, inspections, what, you know, whatever, you could be asked to remove it.
Okay.
And do a proper. But the key is that you do have to let the public know that you are doing work that, that will answer your, the historic district commission.
Can I also add too, that just because they, an applicant may receive historic district commission approval, does not then forego any additional permitting that is needed to do the job.
Correct.
So for example, if a fence is approved, they will then your fence permit.
But they will also need to, to.
You could refer to Jack's HVAC, that's who we're talking about.
Okay, they will also need to do, um, drawing a blank.
Miss utilities.
Utilities, yes, same, this utility, you know, it's a dangerous prospect to start digging the ground without knowing what's, what's underneath you. All of these things exist for a reason, um, primarily for the health and safety and.
Isn't that a state law too?
Yes, oh, absolutely. Contacting this.
That's bigger than Berlin.
Dig is a state law, yes.
Bigger than Berlin.
One more, one more scenario. So I, if Jack's HVAC doesn't get approval or doesn't do it at first as a word and HTC says, you don't have to move it, remove it, but there is a fine. Is there, my, is there a fine? Is there a penalty?
I am not positive about a fine per se, however, we can double the permit fees.
And the HTC assesses fine?
Not the mine, no.
No, the HTC cannot, however, there could be a.
Good point.
Yes. And there may not be, yeah.
So someone could circumvent it and do it, right?
Yes.
Not that I'm saying.
And they also risk getting, uh, told, but removed what you did.
But they don't even have to.
Well, I, I'm not going to speak to what the Worcester County electric permit system is. That's a separate process if the town doesn't handle. I'm not going to speak to what the penalties for not calling this utility might be.
I'll be, I'm talking just, just.
But a lot of this, but a lot of this for Jack's HVAC company can be solved by sitting down with the planning department and having a conversation about what you want to complete.
And, and matters like this would never apply for an emergency. If there was a water pipe or a sewer breakage or something like that, of course, no one is going to say you can't do anything to come up with the HTC, but it has to be a bona fide emergency.
Well, I was, I mean, I watched and I was just a little, uh, I, I was seeking some clarification, so, so thank you.
Can I jump in? Just while we're on that topic, is the matter, is that matter closed?
I honestly don't, I don't.
Okay.
I, to the best of my knowledge, I, I, there were, as of last week, I do not know what the status is today. To the best of my knowledge, there were still permits to be applied for and, and those, those kinds of administrative things to, to be handled.
Okay.
But I'm not saying whether that is the case today or not.
But they did get HTC approval.
Uh, as far as I know, yes, well, they had gotten their approval via a poll vote. It wasn't, it, it wasn't a matter of whether.
The paperwork wasn't in place.
Was attractive and, and acceptable, it was the process that had been completely superposed.
Right, I think that's where it got a little muddy in that it was the not getting the permit and clearly wrong. And then the Open Meetings Act violation, I guess, is where we had a citizen come up and say, um, the town, if they want to continue to trust this, was just go ahead and report with the HTC to the Open Meetings Act, um, you know, for a violation, which I just wanted to make sure we weren't, I assume we're, the town board is not going to do that.
Why, why would they do that?
It's, it's not a matter of, they have not been.
I don't think it.
No, it's not that they violated the Open Meetings Act. It was indicated that there's a purpose.
Right.
For the Open Meetings Act and that is to allow public, public scrutiny of what, what goes on.
Sure.
And that there are processes that have to be followed.
We do.
Like, I don't think anybody's like trying to ding.
No.
Somebody or like go report them, like, why are we doing that? But we do need people to follow the rules. Jack's HVAC company needs to follow the rules.
Oh, it will, I'm just saying. It's for distance examples.
I know, just don't.
I'm gonna thank.
It, you know, when, when, when things like that happen for, for permits that they receive, it's the planning department that people say, why didn't you make that? And that's the bully act.
Or the rules apply to this and maybe not to this person, like, that's the question that's starting to come in. You're up.
What, my turn?
There you go. Like I said, don't regret it.
Yeah. So I remember these pins that we have, you know, the old ones. I gave one last week to, um, Marley Donnelly, she's the eighth grader student here at Middle School, she's the first time in history that I've ever short birds bookmark contest to be a repeat winner. So, and I wanted to show up at something and I, so I gave her my little pin.
Not the old one?
The old one.
If you have one.
I have more pins than my desk.
Do you, I maybe use my little, but I, it was the, um, the round. So anyway, congratulations to Marley.
Should get a few more of these made so we don't have to give away the old ones, but they aren't cheap and we like to be physical.
We should, we should respond to. I did just feel like we had that conversation earlier, you know, I hope all that is taken with, I want employees to have the best accommodations. It's just, um.
It's not about the best, it's the necessary.
Right.
Is what we're having.
So that, you know, honestly, I don't, I don't guess, I mean, I'm not really interested in looking at every single chair that's ordered. I just, I guess it's a little, I know, I'm going to, but, um, so that was it. You know, I think, um, hopefully did a good job tonight. I think, um, once it was clearly articulated what the process was going to be with the motions, I think everything was, um, you know, fairly smooth from that point on, but sometimes governments, I believe, and we got a little ugly, I think, but it's, you know, just a little bit of.
Good family discussion around the table.
I will say furniture pricing is shocking. Mary and I were looking at a catalog the other day and chairs, like, a chair like this is like $300. I'm like, it's pretty ugly.
You want to see something? You could have room to multiple plastic chairs for 99. Even that is 99.
I want to see something even better. I think somebody brought up this statement. Like, if you buy furniture in your estate agency, the first place you have to go is the Maryland Correctional Furniture.
The woodwork shop, what maybe?
If you can buy that chair for $300 at IKEA, as, um, LeLong said, the MCE is going to charge you $400, but you gotta buy it from MCE.
Well, I also spoke with another agency, I want to.
I thought the name was.
Okay, I trust you.
I spoke with another agency and they said they renovated their building and did not get matching furniture and they said it was one, they said, I know it sounds stupid, but it was one of our biggest regrets. We had this nice new building and then you walk in and there's six different color desks because they're all from the prior building and then you go into the next person's office and there's, you know, so it was definitely something we wanted to see, but we did understand it was cosmetic, you know, to some degree, some of it's not.
Part of the way Danielle described it, for instance, it would be one line of desks with different configurations, so they will all look.
Same color scheme, she was saying, to keep it all just consistent, but yes, nothing like, uh, over the top, and I was, no, very.
If you, if you walk in and I have the Resolute desk in my office.
I see it. They need to send it back. Go ahead, you were done, yeah. Yeah, first of all, Tim, Jimmy Charles, even Jamie, thank you so much for dealing with the cold out there. Amazing, I think the town should get you some heating gear, at least to help you out a little bit, but, uh, very much appreciate it and I know I might definitely appreciate
I don't think there's gear that would keep you warm.
No, there's not. I had only three or four layers and I was still cold.
Yeah, of course, yeah. I had the good fortune to attend Chief Downing's set up retirement party, truly amazing. I mean, there was 200 people there and the stories that people were sharing were truly inspirational and we were really moved by it indeed. The amount of people that gave the presentations, it was incredible, so really well attended, quite an event, glad I was able to attend. I did have a question for either Sergeant Collins or Kelsey. In the police report, it talks about they tested five applicants for the academy. Does that mean we've had a lot of applicants applying to Berlin?
These are, I mean, if you want to speak more on it.
Yeah, go ahead. Um, we've had some applicants and a lateral applicant that has applied. It's a cross the state problem that we're having, getting viable applicants, obviously. But we had testing, it went well, we did follow up interviews, um, Kelsey was able to join us for that and we're going to move forward, we got the approval to move forward with backgrounds for a couple of them and we're just holding out for hopefully a lateral. Um, obviously because we can get them back on the road and get staff where we need to be is our hip for laterals.
Yeah, the next academy won't start until, um, July, so we're looking at what, about April of '27 to have someone.
After April of '27, after F2 rolling and.
So it's a long process.
Yeah.
The spaces really fill up quickly at the academy.
They open in March and so they have to get the nades in.
We're earmarking three, I think, and we're moving forward with a couple.
We're moving forward with two.
Yes. So it's a long, slow process to get our nades back to where they need.
We need lateral, um, yes, applicants.
We're getting there though, we're, we're pushing it, we're talking to our friends.
Good. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Friends, I'm back. I will say.
We're happy to have you.
I will say I appreciate all the thoughts, the calls, the comments, the prayers, all the things. I appreciate, uh, the guidance for holding it down for me while I was out. All I'm going to say in regards to that is people, pay attention to your family, don't take any moments for granted because you never, ever, ever know when today might be that last moment. So take that as what I say and I thank you guys for being here for me, um, in my household. But I'm back and I'm glad to be back. And boy, Berlin, things just keep moving. If I'm sitting here or not, I keep an eye, but, but I have from a distance. I will say since, since coming back into the forefront, I do, Tim, even when I was at home and the power was flickering and all the things and this cold weather, thank you all, um, not just your department, but it was the lights, a thanks to everybody that was out doing the parts. Jimmy Charles, I know that with all of this snow and ice and whatnot, it's not been easy on your crew, especially not your equipment, because people don't, I don't think people really realize what cold and constant cold does to equipment. I made sure that at my house and on our street that many people, some of us have multiple dumpsters, but that we did our part in trying to space, because even with the frigid of hitting, hitting something with cold, it could easily just break it that simple. I mean, waking up to 13 degree weather every day, it's, it's outrageous. I can't even imagine what it's like for you all being out on the street every day. Moving on to this week, this weekend, I will say thank you to whoever out there in Berlin, TV land that's watching, for coming out to, um, the meeting that was held on Saturday at Decatur with, um, the Conemotions City in the sports complex conversation. I appreciate everyone that did come out. It was one of the coldest, one of the most treacherous days to be outside. I mean, I had my Walmart delivery literally at two o'clock and I got to my house at 2:05 and some of the water bottles, as I told Mary, were already starting to freeze. So I can't imagine what it was like for the number of senior citizens that were in that building that took it upon themselves to put on clothes, to pack up, to come out to that place to have their voices heard. So thank you to those who came and thank you for those who sent comments that we, we, I, but that weren't necessarily heard out loud. So those were my pieces for today and I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Sooner than that, it's on plan. Sooner than that, it's on plan.
Yeah.
Well, I'll see you on Wednesday, Wednesday's meeting soon.
Oh, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on to comments from the mayor's office. You want to talk about the upcoming public engagements?
Meetings on Wednesday and Thursday. We have our upcoming public meetings. They are public engagement sessions related to the recent communities and neighborhood grant, which we received in 2024. So it's really exciting to be at this stage in phase one of the planning grant. We have a meeting scheduled at St. Paul's Church on Wednesday, February 11th at 6:00 p.m. And we must, let's see, the second in-person meeting on Thursday, February 12th at 9:00 a.m. in the library in Berlin. And we'll be hosting the consultants from the Maryland Department of Transportation, who have been leading the project, engineers and public engagement consultants, who are primed and ready to hear feedback about the potential crossings of 113.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Sarah?
Happy that so many of you will be able to attend. Thank you.
That's exciting that we are there.
Alright, I do want to say that I think Steve referenced this in an earlier discussion, but we did receive a letter from the Westview Community Association regarding sidewalks along Old Ocean City Boulevard to North Main Streets. We're talking about that westerly section of 346. This is something that continues to move forward. We keep at the state, but it's good to get these types of things as a capacity along. It's not just us being the squeaky wheel, that we actually have the residents and the HOAs that are standing behind that as well. So continuing to monitor and push that along. We've also shared it with the planning department and those folks in the planning commission as well. Alright, up next, we did talk about fridge of weather, snow. I'm not going to belabor it. I do, you all know I appreciate everything you do. But Jimmy, thank you for coordinating the town interdepartmental meetings along with Kate, Laura, for helping coordinate those and get the messaging out, as well as the fire EMS. Police department was on deck, so everybody was really here playing a vital role and preparing for those storms. So thank you.
A rule that I advised Jimmy to include all the fancy snow equipment in his budget for next year because that will make sure that we do not get rid of it later.
I did ask about brining, so that might be something that you'll see for the upcoming budget discussions.
Can you relate? Brining?
Now, potentially brine instead of.
Oh, oh, yes.
So there's a little bit of a logistical hurdle that we face. Jimmy, I'm going to say something, but correct me if I mistake. The size of the scoop for the salt from S H A's salt shake to our vehicles, you don't really judge. The scoop's bigger than the truck, so it loses, we lose some salt along the way. It's not really a good use of resources. So maybe transitioning to some brine that we could work with the county on might be a better path forward, so.
I just couldn't see past her being.
It's okay. Natalie's using her table salt from home.
No, just the justice of my.
She was talking about.
The humane pink salt. He just said expensive.
Alright, moving on. So I don't think there's been any lack of discussion at every level, I think, when it comes around the idea of the planning department and the work in the planning department, the work that's taking place with like the planning commission, the HTC. There's a lot of discussions, right? And then there's a lot of information that I think becomes a little misunderstood through the processes. The town code is not always super clear on how to move forward with certain things. When we try to lay out a plan, even the best laid plans for some folks to be able to follow, it can be difficult or arduous because it is different than what they may have been asked in the past. We recognize that, right? But it doesn't change the fact that we as municipalities still have things that we need to do, right? We still have the code that we need to abide by. We still have the boxes that need to be checked and the flow that needs to be followed. So with that, we've been talking a lot internally, town administrator, myself, Emily, Ryan, about ways that maybe, and Gaskell as well, about ways that we can improve the understanding and the workflows around planning, right? With that, we're going to form an internal working group. It's not going to be like a formal committee or anything like that. But we are going to form an internal working group where we're going to take projects like site plan approval, like an annexation, like changes to town code that are easy steps for us to take meaningful progress on and make sure that everybody understands the flow and that we clean it up so that it's easy to understand. We're going to do that moving forward. With that, the group would consist of the town administrator, myself, town attorney, planning, legal counsel, the planning director, Ryan Harstie. And then we're going to add a member from, oh, I would like to add two council members because it puts us below the forum. I'd like to add the chair of the planning commission, the chair of the HTC, the chair of board zoning appeals. And what we're going to do is we're going to work through some of the low hanging fruit first, figure out what we can do to clean the processes up and make sure they're understood across the board. And then we're going to start to publish easy to follow information and make the changes that need to be done to the town code to make it clear and easily understood. So anybody that would like to take part in that, let me know. It doesn't have to be right now, but let us know. And we would like the participation of at least two members of the council. Alright, so, Mary, yes, yes?
You have two questions.
Okay. Any other?
I'll first come for Sarah.
Okay, so for our purposes, Sarah, online. We'll add Jack and Steve. Now, speaking of that, you said something about.
No, Jack and Jake.
Jack and Jake, sorry. I can't play, not enough espresso in the world. The other thing that's coming up, so that's one part. The other thing, we've got our budget meetings that are internal coming up. If you have interest, we've received some interest from the council, but make sure that Sarah has whoever is interested and then we will draw names from that. Alright, if those meetings are coming up. Yeah, I think we've got you and a couple others, but just make sure that everybody has spoken to Sarah and we're going to start drawing those names very soon. Alright, let's move forward, I think. Next step, alright, let's move to sports complex. And so council member Nichols talked about the meeting that took place and the public comment. My takeaway from the meeting, and please, every member of the council was there, which I'm very grateful that everybody took the time out of their Saturday to go. It's very important. I'm appreciative of the public for coming out. Council member Nichols, thank you for door knocking and helping getting the word out. I thank Vice President Burrell in private, but he got me into St. Paul's where I could help hand out some of the letters as well and make sure folks had that information. But the takeaway from the meeting, what I heard, and correct me if anybody heard this differently, was that the public said, this site, it is a no-go for us. However, we're not opposed to a sports complex per se, it's just not a good fit here. That's what I, that was my takeaway, is correct. Everybody else here is the same way?
I think the paper put it the best, it's not the facility.
You read the paper location, Jim.
I'm just. So maybe, it's not the facility, it's the location.
I agree. Very well stated, Steve. Thank you. Alright, so I propose that I think that I didn't clear that or hear that clearly understood and summarized when we left the meeting. So I would like Berlin to go on record with a letter to Ocean City. And this is what I'm proposing. That on behalf of the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, we would like to thank you for hosting the recent sports complex community meeting on Saturday, February 7th at Stephen Decatur High School. We appreciate the opportunity for the Berlin community to share their thoughts pertaining to the potential recreation facility in Bradeltown and the Flower Street neighborhood. Following that meeting and after considering the resounding feedback expressed by community members in attendance, the town of Berlin respectfully requests that the property commonly known as Home Farm, located to the west of Stephen Decatur High School and Stephen Decatur Middle School, be removed from consideration as a potential site for this proposed sports complex. Town of Berlin remains committed to collaborating with the town of Ocean City to explore alternative locations that balance the regional recreational goals with the community priorities. We value our partnership and look forward to the continued dialogue and cooperation as this process moves forward. Thank you for your leadership and for engaging our shared community in this important discussion. Is the group okay with that verdict? Should we alter it?
So I think it's a good letter and I agree, it sums up the sentiment pretty well. I do want to point out one thing, and this by no means is a endorsement of the project, but Ocean City, if they show desire, can do it without a help. They could put a sports court on that site without Berlin's water and sewer. We have nothing to do with that, they're saying.
Well.
That could happen, because they are hard to pass set on that site.
And that's understandable.
But the town.
But the thing is, you're correct in some of that. The other thing is, is that, and I don't think we're going to have to get to this, which is why I think the letter could be very helpful for the decision makers in Ocean City to realize where our position is formally. There, the large portion of this funding relies on state funding. And if that's the route that Ocean City chooses to take after they receive formal correspondence from us, then we are going to go to Annapolis. Like, we're not just going to take that away and roll it over, you know what I mean?
And I can guarantee you beyond the shadow of a doubt that the neighborhood is gearing up for Annapolis in a matter of weeks. So Ocean City, I mean.
The state doesn't like to fund things when municipalities are at odds with each other. They're not getting involved in that.
No, no one wants to be hostile and I hope that that's not the perception. But at the same time, no one wants their voice to be lost in the process. That's the truest sentiment that I could ever give you. They don't want their voice to be lost. And as we were just stating in the meeting that we had earlier, it's a matter of people's, their comfort in their own home. Newt said it best earlier, when someone, and my, what did he say, at my age? What did he say earlier? When he mentioned comfort, quality of life. And that's all that they're asking for in the neighborhood, this quality of life. With all the other things that go on, the traffic patterns, all of the other things. No one in that room said that they do not want a sports court location anywhere for a sports court, period, but they don't want it in their neighborhood. Now they want is just someone to show the due diligence, they're being respectful. But I will tell you, due to historical put-ons over the years, they're not going to sit down for this.
I'm just saying they should be aware of that.
Well, Ocean City should as well.
Mayor, should that letter also be copied to the state department?
Yes, it should.
That's a good idea.
And you should also send a copy to the governor's office because I can guarantee you, we're heading to Annapolis. If Ocean City doesn't seem to look, if they don't choose to open their eyes and reconsider another location.
If we're going to include the governor, we got to include the speaker in there.
But they're all in there. You get a letter, you get a letter, you get a letter, you get a letter. I mean, I'm not being sarcastic.
I was just, I was just hoping that the letter could be like.
I was hoping so too, but you're where we're talking.
But I think that there's a better, I think we should take the congenial approach and just to the council and to the mayor. I really think that Ocean City would listen or should listen to that. And if not, then we have other mechanisms to take. I think right now it's kind of like spreading their tea everywhere. It doesn't really need to. Let's just go to Ocean City. I've included the, I propose including the council and the mayor on the letter. And hopefully that will lead to them, the community feedback should be enough to mine. But I think that a letter from a neighboring municipality, that we've always worked well together, should cause enough to be able to say, okay, hey, look, that's not a good position for us to get into. I think. If we received, if we were advancing a project like that in somebody else's backyard and they sent us a letter, I'm like wind, right? Like, you know, there are a lot of similarities there. But if that happened, we would say, okay, well, okay, the home municipality's got a problem with this. Let's maybe alter course.
Is there another location that you?
We're not at liberty to share that, but I think the best thing for us to do is just say, and this site is probably not the best.
Right, I think the collaborative spirit has been there. You know, I know we got off to a rocky start Saturday with the way the meeting format went, but I, so I understand the process, just so we all are on the same page. The property acquisition is next. Legislature's next year. So that's really interesting to me because the property could be under contract with a contingency that if it doesn't move forward at the state level, it could be backed out.
Unless it's a car before the horse, though.
But it is, but from the standard, there's a timeline associated with it. So that's a challenge for us as well. You know, and you know, I think, my fear is they're moving forward, you know, regardless. But I think this is coming upon the town of Berlin to represent the citizens in that area. Also Worcester County too. You know, there were people that were there that weren't from the inside of town of Berlin. So, you know, going to be interested to see how things play out over the next, you know, month or so. You know, I, it was probably the comment that I heard the most was Ocean City has never expressed an interest in annexation. So digging into that, I learned that there's a methodology where they create a package plan, similar to Walmart, similar to Fort Whaling, where they handle all their waste on site.
And county talked about that too.
Yeah.
When they wanted to take that around as well.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of reasons to be concerned. And I do think, you know, the folks that spoke, there's a lot of passion, you know. I had my head in my hands with the time for the meeting, frankly, you know.
I was a hot ski.
Yeah.
I got grouped in with someone else.
But yeah.
I appreciate you trying to make peace. Try my best, but I will draw reference, like, this isn't coming out of like nowhere, right? Like, Sarah reminded me of this. I didn't realize it. I knew it existed, but I didn't have it directly in front of me. But this was an email from Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, 3:05 p.m. And in my email to Ocean City, I did say, based on our internal meeting, it was determined that if and when site number one comes before the town of Berlin mayor and council, it would not have enough votes for approval. And I mean, it's not new information. It's still old true. And I mean, it just, I think that it behooves the town of Berlin to go on record that we listened and that's our formal position. Everybody okay with the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Up next, we still got some more work to do. We're almost there, we're getting close. Worcester County FY '27 grant request. We're going to submit that with an increase from last fiscal year. I think we're internally kind of aiming for like 550. Last year, I think we were at like 535. So I think it's a mild increase, but the overall grant is likely going to be, or grant request would be 550,000. Now, I asked some of you, I asked everybody, but some of you responded to give me some feedback on what else we could ask for, as well as, I think, the county didn't ask for this, but I think it would be a good position for the town to take, advancing some strategic priorities for the calendar year. Because there's some stuff that isn't direct funding, like say sidewalks. We talked about this for Flower Street going to the schools. We don't have a hard number for that and I really don't want to advance an issue that's like, hey, we want this amount and we don't really have a basis for it. But I think initiating certain things as like strategic priorities that we can work through together will give us a better position as we advance those. So I meant to print out the emails I received from all of you. I've read them. I think I know what everybody has asked for, but why don't we just put it out? Well, yeah, yeah, we.
We need to question you that, but not to interrupt you, but I am. Do we have any idea or sense, did we reach out? And has there been a reply about, I think it was Vice President Burrell's thought of the fire funding through the county and any adjustment?
I talked administratively with the county about that and it's not something they're opposed to having a conversation about. But I think that without better understanding of like the task force that they have around firing EMS and what our discussion points may be, I think it's better to add that as a strategic priority and approach that more constructively, rather than just saying one for one, just a hey, hey. But I mean, it's not that. We have had that conversation. But it's not been in a formal setting with multiple commissioners, which is where I hope we get the strategic priorities. Maybe we can get a subset of the council and a subset of the commissioners to say, let's roll up our sleeves and see if we can make some progress on these things. So I think that adding that to the strategic priorities portion is a good idea. What do we have for funding and?
Are you intending to include the tattoo issue that is.
Strategic priority, not funding directly. Sidewalks, I think strategic not funding unless we have some metric to be able to come up with a number, which we don't.
I mean, I mentioned sidewalks, just like the seat, it's carrying land. It is a safety issue, so.
I think it's smart.
Yeah.
And then you had mentioned West Street. I think we have some tangible numbers on that. I think we need to make them aware of like what our project cost is, but maybe not making it a formal request for that funding, but just saying. it a formal request for that funding, but just say, hey, look, this is what we're looking at. And a lot of this has direct applicability to the work that's being done.
We need some help on this.
Right.
So that is a good question. I mean, how, how does that work exactly? Like the, the commissioners, would they be footing, I hate to say it that way, but would they be footing the bill for sidewalks or would that come from the state? AIC? Like who's funding it is, is the question.
Ocean City said if they do the project, they would put the sidewalks in. But.
Wait, oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about Flower Street?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, I meant West Street.
Yeah, we're talking about West Street.
So who is paying, who would be paying?
For what?
Who should we be asking of? Like is it the county that would be?
Well, it is a true project, but I think we should ask the county since.
Well, I, I agree, but I mean, I agree, but is, my question is, is the county paying for it or is the state funding to the school?
I think all ultimately goes to the county.
Does it all? Okay.
They, I, the funding through.
I just want to be clear.
Did the county have?
Ask it, I need it.
Yeah, we're not approaching the AIC.
Okay.
I also requested money for the community center. That's a good idea.
Now, for community center wise, I think we may be able to do a direct funding ask on that, um, rather than the strategic priorities. I think West Street, sidewalks, firing EMS and then tattoo would be better in strategic priorities. There's also a breakdown we used to receive before my time, but, um, we used to receive a breakdown of like the allocation of funding from the county by department and as a basis of like tax revenue. Um, I'm going to include that in the strategic priorities as well because we often get paid with double tax and it helps us be able to explain where that money really goes and that it's not truly a double taxation and where, how that works if we get a better breakdown. So I'm going to include that as an example with our strategic priority as well. Um, program open space, we've talked about a project there. I want to bring that back to the forefront, um, with the group and the strategic priorities. Uh, let's see. I'm, I'm kind of torn and I'd like the group's feedback on this if you don't mind. Do we include and ask monetarily for West Street or do we put it in the strategic priority? Because we do have a general idea of what that might call.
Well, you, by my count, there's seven strategic priorities.
I have one, two, three, four, I have four, five, maybe four and a half.
Okay.
Well, I have tattoo, firing EMS, sidewalks on flower and program open space.
But are they, I mean, I, nobody wants sidewalks on Flower Street more than people that live there, but us asking for that, are they going to say to us, but that section we're asking for is county, let them take care of that, that's their, their?
We don't disagree that it's their cost. I'm just saying like the students, if they wanted to walk their way.
I truly, I truly, I'm not saying don't ask, but I'm just, you know, they be thinking of what they're going to say because I know thinking of that, unless they say, oh my gosh, yes, Berlin, take part of your money and use it. But I could.
We want them to spend money.
Yeah, we want that.
We want.
The towns aren't going to.
Do you believe that that?
Probably.
Do you believe that there's a downside in asking for that?
No, I'm just, I'm, I don't know. Part of me just wonders if, I don't know. No, no, Adam, listen, ask not receive, yep, no. Ask them. I'm just, that's just me, I should just say nothing. I'm just talking.
Well, I, just for.
What number, what did you have on your list?
Well, I haven't.
Wait, I don't know what I'm writing here. I got, um, I got, I have, I have tattoos. I have tattoos. Yeah, tattoos, fire, EMS, school, community center, which the school is probably less.
Yeah, so, yeah. For funding, I mean, I think that, like, I agree with, with Jay and planning the C for West Street because the school's coming.
So for funding, I have the 550 unrestricted.
Right.
I have West Street and I think we should ask for a portion for the community center.
They know what's Canada's like, we never got.
Yeah, that's, that might be the amount we should ask for.
That's what I was.
So then we're doing four strategic priorities, you're, excuse me, you're doing four strategic priorities and we are doing like four strategic priorities and two funding requests.
Fire and EMS, sidewalk and program open space.
What's funding? West Street, community center, fire?
No, um, no, um, unrestricted grant.
Can you notice?
No, I will, I'll write it, but I need to write it.
Unrestricted grant, okay.
550 unrestricted grant.
I got that.
We'll ask for some for the community center and we'll, we're going to put West Street on the radar.
Okay.
And the price tag.
Just be like, hey, okay.
Yeah, and say this is something we need to overcome together, but you need to know about it because you're entering your budget. So the P O S.
Probably if they ask why, you know, this will street, tell them about the impact of funding, correct?
Yes. I think that we directly tie the two together, especially since the design includes a whole new term.
Yeah.
I mean, at least that position needs to be addressed.
Yeah. I've often wondered if we're, as we're there, um, if the details, um, you know, matter. Obviously in the process, I feel like it sometimes it comes down to it's a number and it's like, oh, we're going to give a little bit more, we're going to give a little bit less. But I'm just talking, you know, that, so like, we have to ask for a, you know, specific projects, I agree, but I just often wonder if it, um, really matters, frankly, if it's more just, um, you put a number at the end, you know, how much more are you going to give or?
And I feel like that at least, at least in our time together, I believe that it's been like this once a year, we'll see you and then, thank you. So I don't want that to be the case. That's why I think approaching it with strategic priorities that you can't really wiggle away from and that we're going to continue to say, let's meet, let's talk, let's hammer this out, takes that play away.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
So we want to see more of each other is what I'm saying.
Right.
Well, you love it, Ken.
We love you. Come on over.